Let's try that again. I did that yesterday. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order this morning on January 15 at 9:02 a.m. And before this meeting gets started, I'd like the Board Liaison, Teri Lucas, to review the meeting procedures and protocols, please.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, Board Liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org/Board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit it to me. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q&amp;A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded.
Thank you very much, Teri. If you could please call the roll.
Love Adu.
Here.
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Present.
Adrian Brown.
Here.
Casey Chang.
Here.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correo. Ricardo Di La Fuente.
Here.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Present.
Harry Legrand.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Here.
Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Mary Salas.
Here.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Here.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Here.
And Joseph Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum. President Agüinaldo.
Thank you very much, Teri. Board, we received a request from Trustee Mary Salas to appear remotely. Pursuant to AB 2449, the Board is permitted to allow a member to participate in the meeting remotely due to emergency circumstances. Trustee Salas requested to appear remotely as she is experiencing a physical or medical emergency that prevents her from attending in person. Is there a motion to approve Trustee Salas's request to appear remotely due to emergency circumstances?
Move approval.
Second.
I heard Trustee Haynes and then Trustee Chang. Thank you. Before we take action, is there any trustee comment? Hearing none, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you. We will now vote on the motion to allow Trustee Salas to attend this morning's meeting remotely. Teri, if we could have the roll.
Love Adu.
Aye.
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correo. Ricardo Di La Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Salas.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Teri. Trustee Salas, are there any other individuals 18 years of age or older who are present in the room with you? I believe you're on mute, but I saw you verbalize "no."
That is correct, "no."
Great. Thank you very much, much, Trustee Salas. Board, we also received a request from Trustee Jennifer Perry to appear remotely. Pursuant to AB 2449, the Board is permitted to allow a member to participate in the meeting remotely due to emergency circumstances. Trustee Perry requested to appear remotely as she is experiencing a physical or medical emergency related to the Los Angeles fires that prevents her from attending in person. Is there a motion to approve Trustee Perry's request to appear remotely due to emergency circumstances?
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you, trustees Haynes and Chang. Before we take action, is there any trustee comment? Hearing none, any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much. We will now vote on the motion to allow Trustee Perry to attend this morning's meeting remotely. Teri, if we could have the roll.
Love Adu.
Aye.
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo Di La Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Salas. Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Trustee Salas, and thank you, Teri. Trustee Perry, are there any other individuals 18 years of age or older who are present in the room with you?
No.
Thank you. Great. Now, we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Our new student board member, Trustee Adu, if you could lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible)
Thank you very much, Trustee Adu, and welcome to the board. Are there any items that the board wishes to take out of order? Okay, hearing none. We are moving straight on to my president's report, and I had a very lengthy one yesterday, so I'm going to keep this one relatively short. I wish I could say that this was our fir-- that Bill and I had our first meeting with you, and it's this one today, but we actually had a meeting in December that we chaired, so we got our sea legs underneath us then. But part of the protocol for us is to bring you up to speed on what happened at that December meeting, so I'm going to read off a couple things that we did, that we both took action on and understood from an informational perspective at that December meeting. As far as board approvals are concerned, the board approved a professional service agreement with Educred Services for accreditation services commencing on January 1, 2025, with a three-year term and a total not to exceed amount of $225,000. The board also approved the ratification of support expenditures from July through November 2024 and authorized Calbright's president and CEO or designee to approve future '24-'25 fiscal year support expenditures for stated vendors, consistent with a budget approved by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee at its August 2024 meeting. The board also adopted Assembly Bill 1855, a resolution which authorizes remote teleconference meeting for the associated students of Calbright College. For first readings, our General Counsel provided a first reading of the revised board policy to 2220.1. I can't read numbers anymore. Executive Committee, which will be discussed at today's meeting as well as the adoption of a resolution designated the membership of the Calbright Board of Trustees Executive Committee. And as far as information and reports are concerned, our Controller, Executive Director of Finance, provided an update on the fiscal quarter-- first quarter fiscal year 2025 budget. She was also joined by Stephen Curry, CPA and manager at CWDL, who provided a report on the '23-'24 audit of financial statements. And finally, our VP of Learning and Instruction, Shannon McCarty, provided an update on the partnership between Calbright and Ripen, highlighting the progress and activities related to integrating a work-based learning model into Calbright's programs. As you'll see from the agenda today, that spirit of innovation and iteration continues, so I'm very glad that we get to kick off 2025 in that frame of being a forerunner in this space. And with that, I pass it to Ajita.
Thank you, and good morning, President Agüinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees. It is an honor to welcome everyone to the first meeting of the new year. But before we dive into today's meeting, I did want to hold some space to address the devastation and the loss and the ongoing fires in and around the Los Angeles area that are impacting some of our Calbright community and some of our California Community College colleagues, students, and communities. With thousands of homes and buildings and structures destroyed, students and colleagues who are experiencing power outages, and thousands of residents that have been evacuated from their communities, we know that the impact, and most importantly, the aftermath of these devastating fires are going to be disrupting lives and livelihoods. So as the situation continues to evolve, Calbright, as a statewide institution, is in contact with our team members and our students in the affected communities, and we continue to offer support and resources that are available to us to the best of our abilities. My heart, and I know all of us, our hearts are with everyone who has been impacted, and I'm deeply grateful for the first responders and caregivers and community members that are just continuing to show up across the state to help those who need us most. As I told our Calbright community last week, despite the challenges that we've weathered, we have always and will always continue to show up for our students and the learners who need us most across the state. So I'm also proud to share that Calbright is entering 2025 with very strong momentum from exciting new programs, growing workforce partnerships, and critical research endeavors. I am truly grateful for the entire board for your continued support and really the championing of our work. For Calbright, last year was a year of transformation and growth, and now, heading into 2025, we're continuing to demonstrate that what it takes to serve adult learners well in education is an education support model that can mold to their goals and needs and not the other way around. Positioned at the nexus of education and workforce efforts, Calbright continues to lean into being the leading edge of the learning curve to boost statewide efforts to expand opportunities for California's adult learners. So to achieve this, we're doubling down on our R&amp;D and innovation efforts and leaning into our ability to rapidly develop, test, and implement scalable solutions. Now, this includes building on our prior successes, leading and partnering around a new iteration of a remarkable first run that we had with the Learning Engineering Tools Competition that was able to harness the power of tech-driven student success methods that are designed to accelerate the impact for our learners and adult learners like them nationwide. Our work in this area has also helped zero in the education technology sector on tools that are demonstrating measurable impact on persistence, retention, completion, and workforce outcomes for adult learners. You're going to hear more updates from this from our VP of Sustainable Growth and District Development, Marissa Bold, during today's meetings, but let me also express my excitement about the opportunities that this presents for us for collaboration with very mission-aligned organizations and true leaders in the field of adult learning and post-secondary education that have been brought together by this work. I am accordingly thrilled to welcome to our meeting critical partners in this work, leaders of the Axiom Collaborative, who share in the bold vision of expanding equity and innovation in education in ways that actually deepen its impact for learners. Calbright looks forward to another successful competition working with the next set of winners to further catalyze progress, including co-designing and implementing some of these innovations to support the diverse needs of our student body and in service of adult learners more broadly. We move forward into 2025, serving more than 4,500 students and having surpassed 1,000 certificates awarded, and our students represent 54 out of 58 counties in California, majority of whom are over the age of 25, identify as members of a BIPOC community, and have come to Calbright, in their words, "to change the trajectory of their lives." For us, the importance of the work remains rooted in the realities of our students, and these are students like Elizabeth Walters. Elizabeth lives in Bishop, California, which is a community of less than 4,000 residents, and throughout her county, there are only a few resources for adult education. There is Saracose's Eastern Sierra location and the county's adult education program, for example, and these are resources that will continue to be critically important. But Elizabeth also needed something different. She tried other college options, and in her words, "she always felt like a number, lacking the support or the flexibility that she needed to balance work and school," until she found Calbright. For Elizabeth, what stood out to her was the fact that these programs are fully online and flexibly paced, so you don't need to fight traffic or hassle transportation if you don't have a car. The curriculum is competency-based and directly assessed, meaning that your progress is based on your knowledge and your demonstration of skills versus the amount of time that you spend in class. And unlike other online options and many online options out there, you're not out there hanging out to dry all alone. There's someone with you every step of the way, ensuring that while this is a flexible educational option, you still have the necessary structure, learning experience, and support to persist and succeed. So we have our student support specialists, counselors, peer mentors, and instructors all focused on providing you with the learning and support tools and resources that you need to set you up for success. And you have access to an entire career services team to guide you through how to apply your new skills in today's workforce. Elizabeth recently graduated from our Customer Relationship Management, or CRM, program, and she's honing her skills right now through hands-on work experience during her Calbright Experiential Learning Internship, designed-- working to design new onboarding programs alongside our student engagement team and in the process gaining valuable work experience. When she's completed her internship, she will have a network of opportunities through our apprenticeship providers, employer engagement, and career services support. And I just want to say, while Elizabeth is just one example of an adult learner who represents Calbright's more than 1,000 certifications, she's a critical reminder that what we have built at Calbright, accessible, supported, skills-based education that's aligned with in-demand workforce opportunities and that are constantly evolving, that's the formula for the future. We are in the right position to redefine higher education and economic mobility for California's working adults, and we're going to continue to pushing to push those boundaries in the new year to create that greater impact. As many of you know, Governor Newsom released his proposed FY 2025-2026 state budget last Friday, which really emphasized the need for investments in advancing career pathways and opportunities. While my team will provide a more detailed overview of the proposed budget during next month's board meeting, I wanted to express my appreciation to the governor and his administration for allocating such significant resources to the proposed new master plan for career education. The governor noted that the master plan's purpose is to align state education and workforce development programs with the needs of California's future economy. With that, we can better coordinate and streamline those programs regionally and across state agencies, while ensuring that California's students and adult learners have access to affordable educational and career development opportunities. This also means prioritizing Californians' real-world experience, what they bring to the table, rather than requiring time spent in a classroom to drive a stronger workforce, and this is precisely what's at the heart of Calbright's model. We continue to uplift the skills that our students already have, build on those skills to align them with industry needs, and advance career pathways for our learners. Every day, we continue to prove that education is not a one-size-fits-all endeavor, and when you actually create an educational model that prioritizes student needs, it breaks down barriers to opportunity, bringing all corners of our communities off of the sidelines of our economy and into good jobs. This is true in California, but I also want to point out this is true in a number of states, red and blue across the country. Our leadership and commitment to providing accessible, flexible, workforce-aligned education has never been more important, and I'm proud of the strides we've made and will continue to make in advancing this mission, and I look forward to working with collaborators statewide and also across the country around shared efforts to support those in our communities seeking to build better lives and to realize greater economic opportunity. So as we set our sights on the new year, Calbright is embracing 2025 with the same spirit of innovation and dedication that has brought us this far. And with that, I want to thank President Agüinaldo and conclude my remarks.
Thank you very much, CEO Menon, for hitting the ground running on 2025. We are moving swiftly to Section 2 of our agenda, which is the closed session. We have three items on closed session today. Item 2.1 is a conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D21. Item 2.2 is a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, title Faculty Success Counselor. And item 2.3 is a public employment, Government Code Section 54957, subdivision B, Chief Financial Officer. Is there any public comment on the closed session items?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Teri. We expect to return from closed session in approximately 25 minutes. See you then. Excellent. Welcome back, everyone. We just came back from closed session, and we have nothing to report. But let's move over to the consent agenda, which is in Section 3. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? Hearing none. Any public commentary?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
May I ask who the second was?
Chang.
It was Adu. Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, trustees. May I have the roll, please?
Love Adu.
Aye.
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo Di La Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Salas.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Teri.
Madam President.
Yes.
I have a question about our practice with the way we've listed personnel items. I don't know if it would be appropriate now or at some other point, but what's your pleasure on that?
Go ahead and say it.
And ask the question?
Please.
I've served on a community college trustee board and visited other boards. It's really unusual to list the resumes on the personnel items, and so I'm sure there's a historical reason why we do that, but I'm wondering why we've continued to do that. It's a lot of information that usually boards stay at the policy level and don't get into that kind of detail. So it probably happened before our CEO was in her place. I think we're happy to sort of revisit the issue. I think we try to be responsive to the informational needs of the board members, and so if the feeling of the body is that that's no longer required or needed, we're happy to pull back on that.
Trustee Haynes.
I would also second what my colleague has said. We, as a board of trustees, don't go that deep, especially for-- especially lower-level-- I don't mean that in a negative way-- employees. You may do that if you're going for a VP, or you might ask for the resumes. You're given a synopsis of resumes relative to the higher-level executive staff, but just everyone, that has never been the case. And I recognize that one of our colleagues wanted to see every one of them. Most of us have not wanted to see every single one, and I know it's a huge lift for the staffing hours to put all of that together. It just seems sort of-- and if there is-- and in my-- I'll tell you, in my case, at those higher levels, if there was something that I wanted to see, I would just personally ask to see that one as opposed to asking that to be a monthly kind of task for staff to do. So I'm in support of making that change as well.
Great. Thank you both. We'll just echo exactly what Ajita just said, that I think we're up for refreshing a few of these processes if they're no longer serving us, so we will definitely take a look at that. Thank you both. Okay, we are moving over to the action agenda. The first item on the agenda is to approve the appointment of our Chief Financial Officer, and for that, I will turn it over to our VP of HR, Joseph Brumgartner.
Good morning. Sorry, I had a little trouble getting back online here this morning. So I would like to take this moment, President Agüinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, members of the board. Today, I'm delighted to bring forth our recommendation and ask for your approval for the appointment of Edward Lee as our Chief Financial Officer. As the Chief Financial Officer, he'll lead the strategic budgeting, fiscal modeling, and forecasting, accounting, procurement, facilities management of Calbright College. As an executive-level leader, he will be responsible for providing strategic thinking and guidance through collaboration with the president and CEO and the executive team to establish long-range financial goals and strategies. Edward is passionate about connecting best business practices with education systems and processes in order to maximize student-centered impact. Edward has served as the Chief Financial Officer for several K-12 school networks, with nearly 20 years of experience in the education space. Most recently, he served as the Chief Financial Officer for Summit Public Schools, a public charter school network in both California and Washington. As a former business consultant with Accenture, Edward worked on key Fortune 500 company initiatives, including strategic growth processes, redesign and cost initiatives. He's received his bachelor's degree from Duke University, a master's degree in education from City College of New York, and an MBA from Ross School of Business at the University of Michigan. We're happy to ask for your consideration of Edward for the appointment to the position of Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you very much, Joe. The Board of Trustees of Calbright College is happy to announce the selection of Edward Lee as the Chief Financial Officer. The Board of Trustees will now vote on the appointment of Mr. Lee. Under California law, I am obligated to orally announce all the monetary provisions of this appointment and their values. Once I announce the monetary provisions, we will have board discussion and public comment on this item. Then, the Board of Trustees will vote on the appointment. The terms of the Chief Financial Officer appointment include: an appointment on an annual basis beginning February 24, 2025; an annual salary of $259,726.50; leave rights consistent with other Calbright classified administrator employees; membership and CalPERS and related employer contribution as set by statute; and health benefits as currently provided to Calbright classified administrator employees. I welcome any trustee discussion. Hearing none. Any public commentary?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Teri. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Villa Lobos and Trustee Costa. Teri, may we have the vote, please?
Love Adu.
Aye.
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo Di La Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Salas.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Teri. We move on to item 4.2 on our agenda, which is Adoption of Revised Board Policy 2220.1 regarding the Executive Committee. That is being handed over to Wanda, but I think she's taking care of something right now, so let's move on to 4.3 for now. Appointment of Board of Trustees Executive Committee members.
Actually, I think you have to take them in that other order.
Which we can't do without 4.2, so apologies for that.
She's here.
She's here. Great. Wanda, welcome. We are at 4.2, Adoption of Revised Board Policy 2220.1 regarding the Executive Committee. Thank you very much.
Good morning, board members. The item before you is a second reading of a recommendation to amend the board policy regarding the appointment of the Executive Committee membership, reducing the membership from seven to five. This item comes as a recommendation of board leadership for efficiency. The first reading occurred in the Executive Committee meeting in December, and so it's before you for your discussion and consideration. Excuse me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, board? Hearing--
I do have a question.
Trustee Williams?
Just out of curiosity, is there a reason this Board of Trustees doesn't have a clerk as part of the officers?
Like role call and everything?
I guess, what do you mean by clerk?
Many of the trust districts, they all have clerks at the board, so there's a president, vice president, and then a board clerk. I just wonder why we don't have one, just out of curiosity.
Well, but the-- okay, so just for an additional piece of information. So, for example, Los Rios has a clerk, but it's our president. The chancellor is actually technically the actual clerk.
Well, usually the chancellor is the secretary, and then there's a board clerk.
Can also--
Yeah. I just wonder why we don't have one.
It's a great question, and it looks from the looks of everyone's faces that it's something that we need to take back, Joe. It's a great question, and it looks from the looks of everyone's faces that it's something that we need to take back, Joe. So we'll look into it. Okay. Any public comment on this issue?
There is no public comment.
Excellent. I welcome a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Gomez Heitzberg and trustee Williams. Teri, if we may have the vote, please.
Love Ado.
Aye.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo de la Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Teri. We are moving to 4.3, which is the appointment of the Board of Trustees Executive Committee Members. Which I think is Ajita's. Hello again, Vice President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees. Again, I'm President Ajita Talawakerman, and I'm here to bring forth item 4.3 of today's agenda, which provides an update on the members of the Board of Trustees Executive Committee. As you may know, membership of the Calbright's Board of Trustees Executive Committee is decided on every two years by a majority vote. And I'm requesting that the board adopt Resolution 2501, which designates the membership of the Calbright Board of Trustees Executive Committee to be the Board President, Hildegard Aguinaldo, Vice President, Bill Rawlings, and current board members Pam Haines, Amy Costa, and Jennifer Perry. With the reduction in the size of the executive committee from seven to five members, this membership list is, of course, missing the irreplaceable Tom Epstein. Though I fully have confidence in his ability to still ask the intelligent, hard-hitting questions that we've come to know and love in our board meetings. Thank you so much, Tom, for your commitment to Calbright's growth during your time on the executive committee, and I look forward to our continued partnership outside the committee. President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, I'll turn things back over to you. Great. Thank you very much. It's our inside joke that this is actually Jennifer Perry, so it's.
I'll move approval and ask the committee to consider the revision or addition of adding a board clerk within that group.
Okay. Any other trustee discussion?
Can we ask our council if we can do that motion, just because that particular? Okay, okay. Thank you, we're member ones.
Feedback for staff. Yeah, yeah. Trustee Epstein slash Perry.
I just want to note for the record that I wasn't fired from the executive committee. That I actually asked to get.
They're not you at all.
But I thought you were still on. You're Jennifer. And I actually asked to get off because I felt like I had done my time and wanted to provide an opportunity to someone else. And instead of providing that opportunity, you just deleted it. So there you go.
Whatever the motivation, we shall miss you nonetheless. All right. Any other trustee discussion? I am still missing a second.
Second.
I trust, I saw trustee Chang first. Teri, may we have the roll call, please?
Love Ado.
Aye.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo de la Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Aye.
Nan Gomez Heitzberg.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Teri. Team, I'm going to switch things up on us a little bit because we seem to have more business to be done in closed session. So we're going to go into closed session now, and we'll see you in approximately 15 minutes. Thanks, everyone. Thank you very much. The board returned from its second closed session, and the board has voted to approve the recommendation to award tenure to employee with an ID number 1073, Student Success Counselor. The vote was unanimous. All right, we are moving on to Section 5 Information and Reports. Item 5.1 is Accelerating Innovation and Impact for Working Adult Learners. And for that, I will pass it to the VP of Sustainable Growth and District Development, Marissa Bold.
Thank you, President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the board. I'm Marissa Bold, Calbright's VP of Sustainable Growth and District Development. I am excited to be here today to share an update on some important work we're doing to accelerate innovation and impact for working adult learners, with a focus today on one example of that, the Learning Engineering Tools Competition. Next slide, please. First, a moment of broader context. Building on the framing that President Aguinaldo and President Menon described in their remarks at the start of the meeting, I have been so appreciative of the almost half decade with Calbright truly at the leading edge of the learning curve. This is rooted in our founding legislation, how the college was originally envisioned, and we have embraced that deeply. As an R&amp;D lab, we're intentionally building our capacity to rapidly design, test, and iterate in a student and equity-centered way, and to generate and share evidence of effective approaches more broadly to improve educational and career outcomes for working adults. This positions us regularly as thought leaders and partners to accelerate innovation and progress for our learners, learners across California, and adult learners nationwide. We've had the opportunity to share a variety of updates on our work in these areas, such as our partnership with UC Irvine and Ideas 42, among many other efforts. Today, we wanted to share an example of this work in practice and how we're driving scalable and sustainable impact in the space, with a focus today on our multi-year engagement and leadership in the Learning Engineering Tools Competition. Next slide, please. So why are we so excited about the Learning Engineering Tools Competition? At its heart, it's a powerful lever to accelerate innovation and advance equity and outcomes for adult learners. By taking a leadership role in the competition and working with incredible partners and leaders like the Acem Collaborative, who are here with us today, we are able to lift up the challenges and opportunities for our focused population of learners and engage hundreds of applicants in addressing them. Proposals focused on the design and development of tools, leveraging cutting-edge AI and learning engineering to support student retention, persistence, completion, and workforce outcomes. This presents an opportunity to move the needle on student success, helping push us further and faster toward improved outcomes while positioning Calbright at the leading edge of the learning curve. The impact of this work also comes from the strong partnerships and collaborations. We're thrilled to have the leaders of Acem Collaborative here with us today, as well as from Wingspanz, who we've had the opportunity to work with and partner with quite deeply. Next slide, please. At the initial stages of the competition, we set ambitious goals for outreach to potential applicants, and we were blown away by the magnitude of response from the community. At the start of the Tools Competition in fall 2023, we set an ambitious goal of 100 proposals for the track, and we were not sure if we would get there. This was new. Next slide, please. We are thrilled to share that we more than tripled that goal and received 336 proposals to the 2324 competition. And what's also incredibly exciting is that 81% of them were new submissions. They were first-time applicants to the competition. So national thought leaders, researchers, experts, and entrepreneurs were inspired to design for our learners, and this amplification resulted in a terrific pool of proposals and innovations. There was incredible value throughout the process, and we continue to engage with applicants and winners today. I want to express our just immense gratitude to the board, to Calbright leadership, to the incredible faculty and staff across Calbright and our external partners for amplifying the competition, sharing it with their networks, and championing this opportunity for innovation at every stage. Next slide, please. Jumping ahead now to some of the results, there were six winning proposals from the first year that we worked on this, all designed to advance equity and outcomes for our learners and adult learners nationwide. They focused in areas such as accessible and personalized support along the student journey to support persistence and completion, and helping students see themselves in new pathways in the future of work, bridging skills gap, and helping students lift up and translate their skills in ways that resonate with employers. We also encouraged, which this will not surprise you, we also encouraged competitors to prioritize equity, not only in who they serve, but in how they design. Our winners rose to the challenge, centering student voice in their process, celebrating a diversity of student experiences and journeys in their tools, including team members with lived experience, the students they seek to serve, creating open access tools and resources that will be shared with the field, and capturing lessons learned in ways that can be leveraged to serve an even wider population of winners. There were more innovative tools than there were available awards, but by engaging with competitors at every stage of the competition, we've been able to form impactful collaborations with both winners and non-winners alike, which has expanded our reach and opened up new opportunities for impact. So what does this look like in practice? Next slide, please. Our role as an R&amp;D lab, the internal capacity we've built, and the diversity of our student body are just some of the factors that make us really strong design partners. Over 70% of the applicants in the last cycle indicated that they were interested in partnering with Calbright to pilot, test, and/or validate their tools in Calbright's environment. And two applicants won the Impact and Implementation Prize to do just that. Internal teams across Calbright are now engaged collaboratively in designing and testing these tools, supporting direct impact for our learners, lifting up our team and students' voices in shaping the design of these cutting-edge tools, and continuing to push the leading edge of the learning curve in service of adult learners. Sharing a bit more about these two tools. First, OA Tutor is a fully open-source software that leverages AI to provide personalized learning support to adult learners. Designed by Zach Pardos and leading researchers at UC Berkeley, it uses learning science and cutting-edge technology to help scaffold learning, fill knowledge gaps, and support students on their journey to mastery. We are thrilled to be working with OA Tutor to build personalized AI supports that are tailored to our learners and programs, and that support broader impact in the field. Our learning and instruction team is leading the way and currently working closely with the OA Tutor team to develop a pilot for our data analysis course as we sit here. We are looking forward to featuring the OA Tutor team and updates on the collaboration in a future board meeting. And now for our second partner we'll highlight today. We're excited to share more about our early work with Wingspanz, and we're joined by Lindsay Kuhn, founder and CEO of Wingspanz, for any questions as well. Wingspanz leverages storytelling and AI to help learners explore diverse career pathways. This tool will empower Calbright students and students like them to see themselves in the future of work and articulate their skills in ways that resonate with employers. Next slide, please. Now, we're testing things out here. This is a video. If it doesn't work, we've got a backup plan. But we will now take a quick look at a brief partnership video from our work with Wingspanz, highlighting some of our early-stage work together. I have lots of thanks for people, but I will dive into the video itself. The core of this partnership is equity-focused, student-centered innovation. Students are contributing their stories and personal journeys to an experienced translator, and it reflects journeys of people like Alexis, and is tailored to adult learners and diverse career pathways. This tool will help students translate their experience and skills to find real jobs. It's a true cross-functional collaboration between Wingspanz and multiple teams here at Calbright. We've also engaged students in the co-design process and used their stories and feedback to design a tool that is authentic and impactful. Students shared that they believe this will be a valuable tool and a great way to recognize their skills and experiences. This student and equity-centered collaboration accelerates innovation for our learners, benefits us and our partners while advancing the field. Thank you so much for watching just this mini clip of the work. It's just a glimpse into the powerful work that's happening, and we truly believe that this is a model for what partnerships leveraging student and equity-centered design can look like for the field. I also want to take just a quick moment to thank Lindsay and the Wingspanz team, the Calbright team, and students who've been deeply engaged in the work, and the Calbright Marketing and Communications team who put this together for us. Next slide, please. Our focus has consistently been on accelerating impact and equity for working adult learners, and it's resonating in the field. In the last year alone, Calbright has been lifted up as a thought partner at national convenings, sought out as a design and implementation partner by leading research groups, helped grow the pool of funding available for future initiatives, and broadened opportunities for impact through powerful strategic partnerships. We've been invited to present at widely-attended webinars, served as judges in the competition, facilitated product review days for our own track, as well as for DARPA's dedicated competition. And along with our partners at Acem Collaborative, Calbright continues to play an important role in the Tools Competition this year. And we're thrilled to share that last year's success has led to new partners, additional funding, and a new major track in this year's Tools Competition focused on enhancing post-secondary learning. And we've already received almost 300 applications. The momentum is continuing. Next slide, please. To speak more to this growing momentum and the partnerships, I want to welcome Acem Collaborative CEO Stephanie Carana and Vice President of Technology Innovation Philip Schmidt, who have been amazing partners in this work and are incredible leaders and champions for access and equity in post-secondary education more broadly. Now I'll turn it over to Stephanie and Philip.
Thank you so much, Marissa. It's wonderful to be part of this journey with all of you, and thank you for all of your efforts and Calbright's efforts to make this competition a success.
Ooh, and Stephanie and Philip, if you don't mind just speaking a tiny bit louder, if you're able to, I don't know if it's possible to get closer to the mic. We have got a big room with multiple technology modes.
Okay, great. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Much better.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, again, thank you all so much. We, along with Calbright, believe in a world where every student can find a seamless educational path that unlocks jobs, higher earnings, and more life choices. And we know that too many students face barriers that hinder or block this path to success. In the US alone, there's over a million students who are stopping out of their educational pathways, which leaves them with debt and without credentials for economic advancement. And we know that with, this is a solvable problem, if we just focus innovation on the areas where we can drive the greatest impact. And that is why we are so thrilled about our partnership with Calbright, is because of this alignment in terms of our values and our objectives. I'll tell you just a little bit more about Acem, so that you have some background. So Acem is a nonprofit. We were founded by Harvard and MIT, and we're the successor to edX. And so edX delivered online courses, which then later sold to UU, and the proceeds came back to fund what is now Acem as a separate, independent nonprofit. And so we learned a few things from our edX experience, which shaped Acem. And one is making sure that courses are accessible is not enough. We need to make sure they're reaching the learners that could benefit most. So the innovations that Acem helps to pioneer are focused on broad-access learners and their potential. And the second thing is we recognize that we have to think about what the journey is in terms of the success pathway, and what that means in terms of ensuring that we are, in fact, not just giving access, but making sure students succeed. And so that is where we're really focused in terms of thinking about strategic solutions along the education-to-workforce journey that actually drive strong student outcomes and impact at scale. And so we make strategic bets along that pathway, and we think about them in three different areas. One is on the engage. What does it mean to engage students in the classroom and the pathways through the classroom? Enable. What does it mean to have the right types of supports, advising cohorts, communities of belonging, those kinds of things? And then the third is Excel. What does that mean to connect into pathways that give stronger economic mobility and that the pathways of education lead to the pathways of economic mobility? And so that is where our focus is, to help drive stronger outcomes. And so we do that through building partnerships with leading partners like Calbright, who already have the ability to reach these learners at scale and are helping to drive the most innovative innovations that are focused on the learners that we all care about. And so we hope that our catalytic funding, along with some target capacity building, can really help to make sure that these innovations actually succeed and that we know, in fact, that they're based in evidence and that they also drive success. And so that is why we're very excited about this. We have another partnership that we'll just share as an example to give you a better. We have another partnership that we'll just share as an example to give you a better sense of that work. So, I'll turn it over to Philip.
Thank you, Stephanie, and thank you for inviting us to join this meeting today. The partnership Stephanie mentioned is actually with another California institution, but just as a quick example, with College of the Canyons at Carnegie Mellon University, we're investing in professional development for community college instructors around the use of AI. A lot of our partnerships are structured like this, and the Tools Competition in this partnership with Calbright is a little bit different and exciting for a number of reasons. It's not just one project or one solution, but it's actually a way to shape the field. Because one of the things that we've come to believe is true, that there is a lot of interest in innovation around technology, but we don't want to just accelerate that innovation. We want to make sure it's focused on the needs of broad-access institutions. And in order to do that, what's required is finding a way to bring together the technology innovators with institutions like Calbright that can act as satellites for innovation, test ideas, evaluate them, make sure they really make a difference for students, linking that to larger systems that can then scale those innovations, and appropriate ways of funding and financing this early innovation stage. And for us, the Tools Competition and the partnership with Calbright has been a prime example of how this kind of innovation focused on broad access, higher education, could be structured. So, we're excited to continue the partnership. We're excited about the teams that were funded in the last round, and about this ongoing work and collaboration with Calbright. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Stephanie and Philip. We are so incredibly appreciative of all that you do and the opportunity to work together. I really feel this work has been such a catalyst for innovation, and we're looking forward to that continued collaboration and partnership. And, as you both have said, shaping the field focused on the needs of open-access institutions and our focused population of learners. Thank you so much. Next and final slide, please. The main theme here is continued and growing innovation and reach. We are so energized by our work at the leading edge of the learning curve and committed to building on and continuing to accelerate impact for Calbright students, adult learners in California, and nationwide. We're looking forward to bringing you more on this topic and related topics in the innovation space in the near future. Thank you again to every single one of you for your support and leadership, and we welcome any and all thoughts and questions. And Stephanie, Philip, and Lindsay from Wingspan's will be available as well. So, next slide, please, and passing the baton.
Any questions from our trustees? Trustee Epstein.
Yeah, I'd just like, if we could have our speakers kind of walk through the experience of a student who is being exposed to this process.
Sure. Lindsay, do you want to speak to some of the engagement that we've had with students, and then maybe students like them who are engaging with Wingspan's as an example?
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you so much for having us here. So, we have the tool, which is a really robust career exploration tool, and then the Experience Translator, which we're building with your support, is kind of separate, and we're getting student input for that piece. So, just talking about, I guess, the whole tool and what it looks like right now, we're currently integrating into first-year experience courses, dual enrollment programs, career offices. And the idea is really to show students, like, real people from similar backgrounds who are excelling in their fields, to help them cross that threshold into new fields and really visualize their futures. And so, the Experience Translator that we're currently building with the input of Calbright students, they're helping us train the LLM, which is really exciting. The objective of that tool is to help individuals who have gained skills through alternative routes, like, maybe they're a single mother, maybe they're a veteran, help them understand and identify their skills and translate them into high-demand fields. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, so, it's, does it kind of credential a credit for prior learning? Is that part of it, or is it actually exposing them to new skills?
Yeah, so, I think what it's doing, we have talked about credit for prior learning, and we love that application for it. And so, when I'm meeting with the Calbright folks, we are talking about credit for prior learning. We're also talking about using it as a program navigator. But it's really helping, helping individuals identify and articulate their skills and see how they transfer to higher-wage fields.
And Tom, I don't know if this is helpful, but one of the things that we were so excited about is this different use of narrative and the power of storytelling, and helping our students see themselves in the types of careers that the Calbright programs focus on. And so, they can see, you know, whether they came from retail, from military, from all of the strength and assets that they have, see people who look like them, see how that translates into, because they don't always know, what does that mean for an IT support role, or what does that mean for data analysis or other things, and to see how others have made that transition, that journey, and to validate and value all of the incredible skills and assets that they have, and help them think about how to translate that, how to communicate that in ways that resonate with employers, and how to think about the program that's the fit for them, and then how to articulate in an employment-type setting what those skills might be. Over time, I think there's all sorts of other components within the Calbright world where we think about the actual assessment and validation of those skills and badging and other things.
I just want to highlight, the reason I love this one so much is because it is not about tools as transactional. When we're thinking about tech in higher education or in education more generally, we think of it as a transaction, right? I log into a learning management system, I access my course content, I complete some assignments, somebody or some rubric grades it, right? This is an opportunity for us to leverage a tool that gets to a very critical, underlying set of considerations for our students, and that is an understanding from their perspective of how they can be best supported to see a new future for themselves. We know this to be a gap. We know career exploration is a gap, and we know that that's an important part of getting folks who have some of the lived experiences that we talk about see themselves in another world, in another context, in another potential future. And how can we do that? By harnessing the best of what we know of pure effects. How can we do that in a way that harnesses the best of what we understand about what the most credible exposure to some of these experiences can be? And so, because we're so centered around community building for prospective learners and for students at our institution, and we see that as an underlying condition to their life success, their educational success, and their career success, these are exactly the types of underlying conditions that we need to be thinking about reimagining and revisioning and providing for students, because that's where the gap sits.
We have a couple trustees in the queue here. Member Adu, Member Williams, and Member Villa Vicencio.
Hi. So, this is a question more so for Wingspan's and how your application works with students. As Board Member Menon and Epstein put very well, there is a gap when it comes to career exploration, and a lot of people don't know how to articulate their experiences that may not align with their traditional educational experience. So, I think my question is, how does the day-to-day operations and interface work for students? When they go onto the application, what do they see? Thank you.
Lindsay, definitely feel free to dive in.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And so, yeah, just to say again, you know, I think what is so powerful is those stories that are really modeling for students, what is possible for them. When they go into, you know, it's very, we want it to be really engaging, and that's one of the things, like, the user interface is one of the things that sets us apart. It's, they go in, there's a get-started button, there are a bunch of, kind of like a roadmap, there are a bunch of options. We do have, so, the way that the site is right now without the Experience Translator, we have a personality assessment, we have, and everything we do is story-driven, so the way we're integrating the stories, we have work readiness curriculum based around the NICE competency framework, so we want them to build these employability skills. Again, we tie in the stories. We have an archive of about 1,000 stories about work, so it's a combination of, like, written stories and videos. And the idea is, we show, I mean, it's a really diverse archive of stories. We want to show first-gen students, other first-gen students who have overcome similar obstacles, et cetera. And then, the way the stories are organized, we have credential pages, we have school pages. They're able to, so if we have, like, an electrician page, for example, we want to show students all the different ways you can be an electrician, or all the different ways you can be an economist. On our economist page, we have somebody who works in an nonprofit, and we actually have the former chief economist of the state of California on there. And then, we have an economist who works at Amazon. And so, really showing students that, like, being an economist, they're all solving the same problem, but it can look like a lot of different things. Or being an electrician can look like a lot of different things. We have one electrician who works at an international airport, we have another electrician who works in construction, we have one who works at Nintendo Land at Universal Studios in California, and so, they're all, you know, really showing them also how they can combine their passions and their, you know, things that make them really excited with their skills and environment. We also have a resume builder and a shareable portfolio on the site. The best part about that is that it does, it shows students, it kind of reins them in. It shows them that, like, this is what an employer needs to see for it to make it through that applicant-tracking system. So, we have all these experiences that they can add. That one is powered by AI, so showing them how to build a compelling resume powered by AI. And then, it exports those resumes to, like, ATS-style Word docs. We also have career planning, career planning tools on the site, and so, that's kind of what we see as the culmination of everything. We want them to get a lot of, you know, ideally incremental exposure to the world of work, and then, when they're ready to build career plans, and the career plans, you know, those are also inspired by the stories we have on the site. And what we did there is, we developed common pathways, so showing students that, you know, these are the steps you need to take to get that entry-level job. They can also base their path, if they're inspired by somebody else's story on the site, they can base their path on someone who's already been successful. And the idea is, for those, we want to show students that there are a lot of different ways to get to the same place.
Thank you for describing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Williams.
Thank you for the presentation, and every time I hear a CalBright presentation, I'm like, I want to go there. And I'm a visual learner, and, you know, with a traditional college, well, part of the trustee role is to promote the work of the district and the college. With a traditional college is a lot easier, because you can walk into a classroom, you can go to a building, you can kind of see the stuff. And so, at the BAGA retreat, I think we were in Santa Monica, we got a chance to interact with the VR equipment. And so, I think for me to be able to, because I could sell CalBright, but to take my sales presentation to the next level would really be cool to experience it. And so, like, if we do do a trustee retreat, it would be cool to kind of, like, see, see CalBright, because the words are really exciting when I hear, and you've introduced several innovative, and, but it's hard to, it's like a bad Jerry curl, you know how it don't curl all the way? Because you haven't experienced it, it's great, right? But it's like, if you just sprayed a little bit of moisture on there, you'd be cool. And so, because I think we keep asking and asking, because we haven't been able to kind of touch it. We don't know what the student login experience is like, we don't, you know, and so, if there's a way that y'all can think about how we could experience it, I think we can do, you know, it just connects it better for us, so.
Yeah, yeah, just get ready for March.
Member Villa Vicencio.
I second Board Member Williams's suggestion there, even if it's even a digital tour, or a virtual, virtual tour, that would be amazing, because then we could see what the actual student experience is. Speaking of the presentation, I love it. I actually, when I was thinking about this, this is what I do as a faculty member during office hours, when I speak to students, especially, for example, our first-generation students whose worldview is not as broad as ours, and they have a limited view of the jobs that are available to them. So, I second what President Menon was saying, that this is not transactional. This is definitely much more sort of on the evaluation side qualitative in nature. You're going to pay off dividends by allowing students to see the possibilities out there in the world. So, I'm really excited on how, again, this Wingspan's program works. And I also love seeing the students already being brought into the conversation, into that space. Some ideas that I was just thinking about brainstorming, obviously, students love to see themselves, and obviously, you're piloting this program now. In the future, I could see alumni, right, giving back, that full-circle effect of, you know, of them being then connected to industry and then helping uplift current CalBright students. Maybe even building out, and I'm sure our wonderful team is already thinking about this, but really connecting them to the industry once they've sort of focused it and know where they're going to want to pursue. I see the ideas of job shadowing here is going to be very important, because I talk about this in my office hours all the time, is, once you've identified sort of the organization you want to work for, you need to know how to build your networking skills, those are so important. How to do informational interviews, which I ask students all the time, do you know what that is? Most of them don't. And so, I love that the resume builder is there already, but obviously, again, I think this really is an important component to, I think, to Calbright's innovations. And I guess my question would be, if you could explain to me, you know, how does the student sort of know what part of Wingspan's to look at, right? So, do you give them, like, a survey first of sort of their skills and their passions or interests, and then you have a specific, you know, program that you have them to watch? Obviously, just narrowing that choice, I was wondering if you can expand that for me, or provide some more context, because I would really be interested in seeing how, what that process looks like. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll turn it to Lindsay first, because I think you hit the nail on the head, actually, of a variety of ways that we're thinking about this, too. So, thank you for just all that you are sharing, and Lindsay, excited for you to speak to that. And then, Don Orth, who's our VP of Student Services and Success, is also on the call, who can speak to that as well.
Yeah, and thank you. And exactly what you said about the alumni stories, so that is one of the ways we've had a lot of success incorporating stories. So, whenever we partner with a school, we do tell their alumni stories and integrate them into the platform. And all of those stories are aggregated on a school page, so students can see, I think it's just so valuable for them to see, like, where somebody ends up with, like, a, you know, like, a certificate in IT from that school, you know, what opportunities open up for them. So, that was a great, you know, a great point there, and something that we're already trying to do. In terms of the, and then in terms of the matching, and what you kind of described was on the spot as well. So, they take, right now, they take a story-driven personality assessment, so it's based on the Holland Code, which is, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Holland Code, but they use a RIASC value, which stands for Realistic Investigative Artistic Social enterprising and Conventional. And a lot of that comes from the...
That's why there's a lot.
Yes, it comes from, it's a mouthful, and it comes from, a lot of the data comes from the Department of Labor. And so, students take, right now, it's 60 questions. Every question is tied to one person's story on the site. And so, the objective, a lot of these assessments, they ask people, like, you know, do you like to build kitchen cabinets? We have a very modern take on that. That just doesn't, it doesn't resonate with, you know, land for us. So, we have questions based around what that person does in their job. And so, the objective is, they take this personality assessment, they get insight into their personality, they get career matches rated by excellent, good, and fair. And then, they're able to create that list, so it feels right for them. So, if one of the matches doesn't feel right at all, they can thumbs it down, because the last thing that we want to do, and it'll remove it from that list, the last thing we want to do is, you know, turn anybody off from their exploration. We want them to still feel like they have agency in their futures. And then, they also just meet these 60 really inspiring people as they go. And so, the idea is that as they're taking this personality assessment, they also build their competency in the world of work. And then, one of the ideas that we just launched, inspired by conversations with Calbright, is a program navigator. So, now, when a student takes it, say they're from Calbright, we work with Mendocino Community College in California, we also work, you know, a few others. And so, when they take it, they get their results, and what they see first are the careers that are tied to programs at, you know, at Calbright, at Mendocino. that are tied to programs at, you know, at CalBright, at Mendocino. And then they can also use a toggle and sort all programs or all careers. And so then they see all of their options. But we do try to direct them first to, to the careers that are related to the programs at that school.
Thank you. That's very impressive. And hopefully there's ways, obviously, to connect. I'm sure you are already with industry and whatnot. And I think just one last comment. If you haven't already been sort of thinking about this, thinking about sort of the intersectionality between these type of industries. I know when I speak to my students, when I teach political science, they only just think about government, but they don't think about, hey, you can take political science with psychology or, or digital media and journalism. And that there are career pathways in those areas that need to be focused on, that they need to be aware of. And so I believe this is the platform that can do that. And so I'm just lending some, some of my suggestions here. So I look forward to hearing how this progresses in the future. Thank you for your wonderful work.
Thank you very much. Trustee Haynes.
Oh, it's me. Okay. So thank you so much. I'm absolutely intrigued about the power of the story and telling one's personal story. And I really, I'm intrigued. I want to take that test. So if you can share, if you can share that, I think it would be very enlightening. And I say that because, and I'm, I'm thinking much more holistically, I'm so glad there is a CalBright that is, has the ability to be innovative, to think outside the box, to travel in places that we have not been able to travel as a system. And as you told, as you were telling about the story, I'm reminded of a student at Los Rios Community College District that I had an opportunity to meet. He was, I think Nigerian in birth and he had come over having been an RN there and spent some time there. He was young, he was young. And I don't think anybody really listened to his story. I don't think there was a capacity to do that and then give him credit for having been an RN in Nigeria. That door was closed with us telling him that he needed to take all of his RN courses all over again. And so I see the opening of being able to identify skills as a basis for determination of where, where people are is just so critical. I, I've used for years the, the statement that our students don't come as empty vessels. And I didn't quite understand how important that was because within that vessel, there are all of these life experiences that we have not taken advantage of and not allowed our students to take advantage of on our campuses. And I will just, I will, I will note yesterday's meeting where we are now saying that a student has a right to take a course in math to help them. If we could just get them to tell their stories about where they are and, and have them, and, and look at what skills they bring to that, to give them the security and the, and the knowledge that they're not coming just empty. Because so many of our students fear math. They fear calculus. And just telling, and just telling them, the first step is to say, you're coming to us and we're going to help you every way we can and put all of the, the source, resources at, at your disposal and we're going to be there every step of the way. But the other is identifying what skills they currently have that would be helpful to that journey and allay some of that fear. I realize there's no question in that, it's just a statement. But that's, that's the, that's the beauty. That's the gift. That is the work that CalBright is helping us to do system wide, is to be able to, to look and to say, okay, what do we do next for the system? And more importantly, for the students who we have tended to leave behind or not recognize when they've left us.
I think if trustee Haynes took a career exploration test, it would return as a disruptive board member was your ideal profession. I say that with the greatest love and affection. So I, I think there's a lot of consensus here that we need to play in the sandbox. So I hope that's in our future as well. Trustee Brown.
I wasn't going to comment at first because as a career counselor, everything that you're talking about is everything that I always do when I'm working with students. So it's in my perspective, right on track. I agree with the comments about the moisture needed for our jerry curl and that having a sandbox for us to play in with this software really help make it more meaningful for us to understand the process. But I also wanted to take a, oh, there's one thing I wanted to ask and then I have a few comments. So my question first is, is there an aspect of this that talks about who you work with? I kind of heard you go through all of the normal stages I go through, but at that last stage, you've got your resume, you've got, you know, you talked about the seeing all the different, different directions you can go in your career and all these, these different things. But even if you find that right role, finding the right people to surround you while you're in that role is ultimately what's going to keep you with a company, institution, organization, right? So I'm curious to know if the software addresses that at all or the website. And then my overall comment, a broader view, is storytelling is primarily the job of Hollywood, well, now Georgia. And I've always, one other thing I've always expressed to my students was this severe lack of diversity, of representation of careers. People often, when you hear the word diversity, think about the big three, race, gender, class. But there's all kinds of other diversity. And the majority of content that people are streaming, the careers you see available, it's doctor, lawyer, cop, teacher, a nurse maybe? So how much exposure do our students come to any of our institutions worldwide? How much exposure do they get to the possibilities that there are? Not very much. And so then what are they left with? They see celebrities and they think, maybe I want to be a celebrity. They see athletes and they think, maybe I want to be an athlete. And then they see stories. And they see stories about the same five careers over and over and over. So that's a much bigger problem that this board cannot solve, but I really appreciate the attention to story because they have not been told enough stories about what's possible. So thank you.
Vice President Rawlings.
So I wanted to call out Acem a little bit here. So I was a very early user of edX. I, I love the interface. I loved the opportunities it gave to folks who, who just were looking at, at exploring. And so when it wound down, I was a little disappointed in that. I am so excited to hear that it's led to a group like Acem and the partnerships we have now with you. And if this discussion around wingspan is any indication, I'm so excited to look for the next round of these tools and what we might have available to us. And the work that you all are doing really carries a legacy of edX really to another level. So I'm so excited to look for, for this partnership and how it can continue doing it.
Great. Oh, thank you so much, Vice President. That is, it's just really heartening to hear that because we know that the types of conversations that you're all having in the boardroom here and thinking about how do we drive innovation and the level of engagement to understand what does that mean for students and which students and how and why that matters and to be able to connect the two is really what we're all about. And we believe that with leaders like all of you, we've got now 23 partnerships where we're having conversations of how do we drive more innovation into existing systems and new systems in a way that can help transform the sector, what we all know and believe is possible, where it can make such a difference for the millions of learners that need it most. And it's all within the committed people like all of you and now all of us too with our refreshed mission. And I think what edX's ideal was, was actually to help learners more broadly. It just didn't get that reach. And now we have this extraordinary opportunity. So we are very humbled and grateful to be partnering with you.
Trustee Epstein.
I have a question for Acem too. I've, I've looked at your website and I see that you have a partnership with ASU and Southwestern Community College. And I'm curious to hear a little bit about that. But also, what directly are you doing with CalBright students as well? Is it similar to what you're doing with Southwestern? Is it totally different?
Thank you for the question. The short answer to the last one is it's different. And so I'll, I'll tell you why. So I, I'll start with the ASU local with Southwestern District Community College. So the goal is to help reach students who are, who are in their local communities and leverage the partners and the relationships that are on the ground. And so that is the, that's what the relationship is. And to give them pathways for the students who choose to, to give them various pathways into four-year degrees that then work for how they're living and working. And so, so that's the thing that they're kind of testing out and then seeing if there's other places that that might make sense. That's the only one in California. I think otherwise they're in Arizona for the most part. But, you know, this idea of how do you think about the importance of in-person connections with online potential to open up pathways is the broader idea on that one.
So just, just to clarify, so does, do you have people that then interact with the Southwestern students and help them find a transfer path to ASU? Is that, is that what it's about?
So our role is as a, we are operating as providing some catalytic funding and then capacity building support and thinking about how impact happens. And so that's the role we're playing. So we're not doing direct delivery, but the program team on the ground, working in partnership with Southside Community College District, is doing that on the groundwork and working, you know, now with like handfuls of students in really understanding what that student experience is so that we can understand whether or not that makes sense as something to help, you know, expand and grow. And then our role as it relates to CalBright, as Marissa described, is to think about how we can help support your efforts kind of in a similar way. So we're not doing it directly, but we're helping to foster this tools competition and bring in the best innovators that are anchored in, in mission and the work in these learners. And we hope that we can have more and more innovations come and, and then, you know, help support your work to help more learners. So we're, it's more in a, a competition role where we're helping to curate the, a lot of the opportunities that come and then support them along the way.
And I did just want to say thank you because the other piece that we've been so appreciative of in terms of the partnership and the collaboration has been the doors that it's opened in terms of collaboration amongst folks who are invested in by Acem. So the ability for you, for you to bring together, as you did in November in Cambridge, a series of partners who are deeply aligned and deeply engaged in this work was a really galvanizing moment. And I think we're going to continue to see moments like that. There's both these kind of specific projects that we're working on and then also what we're unlocking in terms of the ability for us to really shape the innovative direction of the field more broadly and with the express purpose of focusing on this population of learners. So, so thank you absolutely for the, the partnership and the guidance and support along the way, but also just for what your, you know, the space that you're holding for all of us in higher education workforce that are driving so aggressively towards these outcomes and feeling greater urgency and need around those in the coming months and years.
Great. Trustee Brown.
I just wanted to circle back to my question and also add to it. Member Haynes mentioned something that reminded me about YOSO's cultural wealth and like cultural capital concept. So my first question was, are we, does this, and not just here in this, what we're talking about right now, but generally CalBright, because it might be happening somewhere else in some other way. So the two things I'm wondering about is, is there that, and they're both kind of related to fit. Are there conversations that happen of, hey, what do you already bring to the table that might make you a good fit for XYZ careers? That's more on the front end. And then on the, on the exiting end, what kinds of, of contexts and environments do you thrive in best? And are you going to be a good fit for XYZ company or XYZ culture in a company? So are those things happening with this? Or, and if not, are they happening elsewhere within CalBright? So I'm not sure.
I think it's a both and. So I actually think this would be a great spot for Don to jump in, to talk a little bit about the CalBright specific context for the work. And then would love Lindsay and others to, to comment on how specifically some of the tools and projects that we're talking about with them can be leveraged in that way.
Great, thank you. Good morning, President Aguinaldo and Vice President Haynes and Board of Trustees. My name is Don Orth, Vice President of Student Services and Success. Yeah, I'm, I'm very happy. It's a great question. And what I, what I, can you hear me? Yes, here, great. What I can say is that we are kind of, we have a renewed focus in the Career Services Department, Counseling Career Services on career changers. We realize that a lot of our students are coming from different careers and looking for kind of a change. And so to do that, to do that well, you obviously don't, you're not starting from scratch, right? So there is a lot of work and we even have kind of some materials to help students understand that in a career change, you're not starting from scratch at all. There is a lot of value you already bring to the table. So, and I'm really excited, I'll be really excited to talk, talk about the specific work probably in a meeting or two from now. But what I, what I can share is that this focus on career changers and, and in fact, kind of a new workshop called Strategic Career Change is really focused on elevating the value and the skills that students bring to the table already and translating that to kind of the careers that they're interested in. Wingspan and the Experienced Translator is a super powerful tool in that space because it allows students to kind of discover the value kind of through a series, through kind of a conversation, discover the value of what they bring to the table. So it's a, it's a critical part of, of that, of that work.
Great, thank you very much. I'll reserve the, the last comments and questions for me. I think that these, these two tools just really scream equity and access. I reflect back on my own experience, which is in the Asian Pacific American legal community, where my exposure to certain careers happened physically at panels. You had to go to specific panels at specific events and the quality and value of your network was the only thing that you had to rely on to get exposure to these folks. I remember specifically, one of my role models was the Deputy Chief of the Narcotics Division at the US Attorney's Office in the Central District of California. He happened to be Filipino. And if he was not Filipino, I would have no idea that that career existed. I would never have seen myself in that space. But it was this one-on-one, in-person experience that I had to rely on. And what wingspans does is it opens that wide open. I mean, the fact that so many people can tell those stories and you can go to these multiple panels in one shot, to me, is just mind blowing. I am, I'm so appreciative of the work it's taking to really ground us with, in equity and access. The second thing is that I love how these tools really build upon each other. I mean, to, to trustee Villa Vicencio's comment, this is really opening the door to, to connections to so many other things. And we talked about Ripen in the December meeting. This connects with Ripen. So the fact that everything is building on one another is just, it's, it's getting us not only on the ground running, but it's running faster, which is just truly exciting and thrilling. So my question is this, it seems like this is giving our students exposure to careers beyond the offerings of CalBright. And that's a good thing and that's intentional. So what does that handoff look like? How are we creating that, that warm handoff to another industry or another institution when we're really intentionally trying to get you out of CalBright? That's, we're, we're trying to get you out of our space, which is kind of counterintuitive, but exactly the purpose.
I will just say, I think the, the best part of what you achieve when you rely on the agency and empowerment of the learner is the opportunity that you give them to also have better information from which they can make a next set of decisions if they, if they feel like this opportunity or this career path is not for them. And that part feels like something that we would do for, for the learner regardless of whether they enroll with us or not. And to me, that is one of the most important parts of that process because there is so much information asymmetry out there in the post-secondary market. And the one thing is, I, I would say like, we want to be mindful of the And the one thing is, I would say like, we want to be mindful of the fact that anything that we would do by way of recommendation, we need to have assurance that we're sending the learner in a direction where they're going to be sufficiently supported to realize that outcome. So I think, you know, sort of where we are truthfully in the process right now is to be able to say like, if this is what you're looking for, these are the opportunities that you want to pursue, these are the considerations and know that you have within you. You know, you are enough and, and you have all that you need to put yourself on that path to success, even if it's not one of these programs. So I think it's a, you know, that's an early start, but I think the hope is also that, you know, as we get further into this work and we engage with other institutions that are similarly focused on better serving these learners, there's, there's greater opportunities. And I think there's a lot of great work happening in the system, I will say, particularly with a number of my colleagues who are working closest to the communities in spaces like the non-credit space. You know, I, I am eager to see folks in the non-credit space also, you know, for us to support them in the roles that we all have to continue to allow them to open more doors for those learners into successful pathways that also lead to furthering educational and skills opportunities. But in this moment, they are, they're some of the most reliable parts of our system and, and the most responsive to, to direct community needs and supports that are required in areas of alignment. So, you know, those are, those are also spaces and those are colleagues who we continue to engage and who the Chancellor has, has really kind of galvanized and brought support and focus around.
I was about you to quote you, so I'll let you go first.
I'm sitting here as the oldest member of this board and having started in the airline industry in 1966, which had a lot of its start due to military. And the change technology parts of, of the airline industry, I was party to, I saw it. And what I realized then and what I, what I have brought with me and what we're realizing now is that change is exponentially faster and moving faster. And we need institutions that reflect that. We need educational institutions, those who do training, those who do skill building. I think that Calbright is on the cusp of that because we should not be expecting someone to stay in a job for 20 years doing the same thing. We will have to continue and they will have to continue to build skills upon the skills they already have possibly. But that's, that's, that is the reality. You know, I talked to a young man about two weeks ago and he is into, he is into gaming. He has superior skills. He's making money gaming. He's now at CRC. He is going to be going to, and he's going to be, he's going to get a master's. He's probably going to get a PhD in that. And he may, he may get off of that train and go some, some other place. But he, he is, he is, we are now building him, helping to build him so that he knows that he doesn't have to stay in one place. And that's, that's, that's the piece. And that's the piece that Calbright is helping us see and actually putting, putting things in place. I thought that's a, putting things in place, putting technology in place so that there's always going to be that churning of change. We will not survive as educational and training institutions. Our, our, our way of life is not going to be able to, we will not be able to succeed without that kind of critically being, knowing that we're going to have to make these changes. And those, and that's why the equity piece is so critical because we cannot leave anybody behind as we have done in the past. We have to bring everyone along in this process anyway.
I'll just, yes, Anne, which I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a redframer, you know? I'm a, I'm hopeful and optimistic, but responsible in that hope and optimism. But I will mention that, you know, one of the early things we're starting to see what, what is trending and I think others are experiencing this as well, is we're seeing more short-term economic displacement at higher levels of the income ladder than we had previously seen before. And that's a disruption that's going to continue. And we're seeing, this is where we're going to really see a lot of friction in our educational systems overall, not just in California, but nationally and globally. And, and I point this out because it is going to force us to continue to rethink what has traditionally been the paradigm structures of how education is delivered and how people access it. It is not just nonlinear. It is, it is, it is functionally in a state of being, you know, kind of bursting at the seams in terms of the pressure on it. And so I, I mentioned that because right now we're able to see and collect a data, the data and contextual information. So we have a number of students that have come to us who have a bachelor's degree and our expectation is the old adage that was your lifetime earnings is going to be a million dollars more than it would be for a high school graduate is not sufficient to tell them in this moment when they are experiencing a gap in income that is, and a burn through their savings fairly quickly and an inability to find a new job. And, and but for the fact that there is an accessible point in time training opportunity for them to reskill in the ways that they need to. So my BA in 1984 doesn't hang on to the value necessarily that it did before, but I can't afford the $25,000 extension program that doesn't allow for any support or aid. These are real things that are happening to people. And as an open access institution, it is not our job to, to, to judge that, but to accept and to serve. But I, I point to that because as we begin to continue to collect that kind of data, I think it's going to really challenge a lot of the assumptions that have been conventionally held out there, not just in this group, but down the street, in the halls of Capitol Hill and, and beyond. And so these are the types of conversations we've been increasingly engaged in and have the opportunity to provide perspective around largely because we're collecting the information and we're investigating and, and learning our learners in ways that allow us to share and provide amplification to their voices and lived experiences. In all of these other conversations that are happening where decisions are being made, but the reflection of the realities are not looking at it from the lens of, of those who are increasingly being hit by these transitions in the economy.
My, my quote of you, Pam, was that time is the killer of dreams. Because what you're saying, Ajita, is that we're going further upstream in the decision-making process. So if our intent is to set you on whatever path is right for you faster, we need to get that right. So extreme pressure on all of us to get this right. So certainly a pressure we're willing to take on. Trustee Villa Vicencio.
I'll just be brief. I, everything that what President Menon mentioned, sort of rethinking about what work looks like in the 21st century and we're already there, is right on point. White collar jobs are being threatened, AI and technology, we're moving so fast. And so I was at the California Learning Labs Conference down at UCLA. And the major theme through line through that conference was what is going to be the value proposition of higher education in the 21st century? We have to completely rethink. Obviously, I think that's what you're, you're touching on, right? What is, what is it, we are going to offer students, clearly that has changed with the 20th century model, which I, I would argue we're, we're still using like 18th century models in the classroom, right? And, and seeing what we're doing here, what you're doing here in Calbright is directly answering that question, that we're not just focusing on, again, even though those terms, blue collar and white collar are now being muddled in this 21st century. So we really do need to think outside of the box. And I believe the mission of Calbright, again, addresses that and addresses, again, that key question of this new value proposition, why students need institutions like, like ours. So thank you.
Great, thank you to all our presenters and to our board for this incredibly robust discussion. I have goosebumps from all of the, the things that we're talking about here and just I'm really happy that this is the work we're looking forward to doing as an institution. So thank you very much to everyone. Amber Borth, our Controller, Executive Director of Finance, has the responsibility of speaking on item 5.2 and following this, these very exciting shoes to talk about reports on contracts and purchases, something also similarly very exciting. So good luck to Amber. But Amber, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you so much. That was a wonderful conversation to listen to. And as a member of the finance team, I'm just so proud to support Calbright in every way that we can. And with that, today's agenda item is a standing agenda item in which we are listing our report of purchases, about $500,000 for the month, as well as our contracts that were let. So we had a total of five contracts. I'm here if you have any questions regarding either exhibit.
Any questions from our trustees? Member Brown.
For the advertisement and promotional, I was wondering if there was any thought to, particularly for the areas that we haven't reached, to have a non-digital approach in addition to what we have here?
That would not be a question I can answer.
Yeah, I don't see our mark come on, so I'm going to pinch it on this one in a way, and then with the information I have, which is, so actually, we do do some targeted in-person outreach. And usually it's connected to community convenings. So we, for example, do the Black Learner Educational Expos in key parts of the state. So there's a handful of direct on-the-ground outreach that does take place. That being said, we're not staffed or have the, the resource ability to do so much of that outreach, but there is some supplement to our outreach, particularly in some of the communities that need it most. And then the other way we get a lot of information out is through community partners. And so, you know, along the way, especially as early as the time of the pandemic, we also had tools and resources that we would, we would provide for folks like the AJCC Centers and things like that. So there's, there's both non-digital resources and digital resources. The digital resources are obviously, have the easiest way of having the, the most expansive reach.
Thank you. Any other trustee discussion? Teri, any public comment?
President Aguinaldo, we have Mackenzie, who would like, from Calbright, who would like to speak.
Mackenzie, floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. And let me, I'm not sure that I can turn my, my video on, but I am Mackenzie Smith, the Vice President of Marketing Communications and Outreach, and really appreciate your question, Member Brown. This year, we're actually looking into doing some direct mail as well as local TV and radio ads in some rural counties. We're currently in 34 of the 40 rural counties in California and 54 of the 58 counties across the state. But obviously with access to, you know, the internet and any of our digital platforms where we do our advertising, that access is lowered in those rural areas. So we're currently working to get a campaign off the ground for that. So happy to share more on that over email or a different call. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mackenzie. Teri, anyone else?
There is no other public comment.
Perfect, thank you very much. This is an informational item, so no action is needed. We're going to move to constituency group reports in Section 6. 6.1 is from the Calbright Academic Senate and we do not have a report there. 6.2 is the Calbright Faculty Association. We do not have a report there. 6.3 is the California School Employees Association. And we have Anya Elder, its president slated to give a report. So over to you, Anya.
Thank you. President Aguinaldo, President Menon, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the board. It has been my greatest honor to lead Calbright Chapter 53 as the chapter president for the past three years. We began as a small, determined group with a clear vision to make Calbright a place where classified employees are empowered, take pride in their work, and have the opportunities for growth and success. Today, I'm proud to say that with our expanded membership, one completed contract, another in progress, our mission remains to change, unchanged. December was a really significant month for us. We reached a significant milestone with our chapter elections. And I'd love to announce that we have a new full executive board. So I'm thrilled to announce our new officers. Donna Howard, our Student Engagement Specialist at Calbright, will serve as president. Mike Palmieri, our Career Service Specialist, will serve as vice president. Whitney Abara, Student Support Specialist, will serve as secretary. Karen Snow, our Senior Research Analyst, will continue to, to support the union in the position as treasurer. And I have the special pleasure to announce the appointment of our very first chief steward, Maria Reynoso, our Student Support Specialist. What's particularly noteworthy about this team is that the majority are student-facing staff. And as I pass the torch on, I'm confident that our student needs will remain at the forefront of our efforts, aligning with Calbright's mission to support students across the great state of California. To the board and Calbright leadership, thank you so much for your partnership and your ongoing support of Chapter 53 and all classified employees. As we entered 2025, our chapters stand strong and ready to continue our important work. Thank you. And with that, I'll pass it to our new president, Donna Howard.
Hello. I'd like to express my heartfelt thanks for the warm welcome and acknowledgement. It's an honor to serve as the 2025 Classified Union President, and I look forward to working together to support our community and enhance the experiences of our staff and students. Thank you.
Thank you very much and congratulations to Donna and all of your board members. And thank you, Anya, for the wonderful report. Item 6.4 is a report from the Associated Students of Calbright College, and we do not have a report there. So we can move swiftly to public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard? Alrighty, hearing none. The business of the Board of Trustees is now complete at the 11:30 hour and we can adjourn. Thank you very much for your participation. Stay safe and take care.